I'd like to call to meet an order, roll call.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mrs. Kratz.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Mr. Pennarello.
Here.
All present.
If you go arise for a pledge of allegiance and move in silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of School Directors held an executive session on Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. The topic was personnel. The session lasted approximately 180 minutes.
At this time, we have our recognition showcase. Really excited tonight to have Mrs. Moyer come up and introduce two of our seniors. Last Wednesday, the seniors had the opportunity to do their senior project presentations, so we have a great chance tonight to combine two things. We're going to talk about our Cub Club donation, which is for our school newspaper, and we're also going to have the opportunity to have two of our seniors present their projects. So, Mrs. Moyer.
Good evening, everybody. Kids are back. I'm excited. It's always a good thing, right? So, as Mr. Stout said last Wednesday, several of us in the room participated in senior presentations. It just so happens that Mr. Stout got to observe Ethan Millard, who is with us tonight, and you'll meet in just a moment. And Mr. Zawada got to see John Luce's presentation as part of his senior projects, presentations. And they both were already coming tonight to represent the Cub. So, it was a great opportunity to introduce senior presentations to the board as a whole. Basically, what happened is last Wednesday was an early dismissal day. At 1:15, seniors started arriving at the high school, spread out across the entire building, and this is kind of the culmination of their career readiness work. So, in just a moment, I'm going to turn it over to the two gentlemen. We also then have a third gentleman with us from the Cub that they will introduce when we're ready to get started, okay? The plan is, that all going well, we will continue to do senior presentations for you throughout the school year this year and give you exposure to senior presentations across a broad spectrum of kiddos, plans, future readiness, all of that. So, I hope you enjoy tonight. I'm going to turn it over to John Luce, who has the pleasure of going first tonight.
So, my name is John Luce. I'm a senior down the road at the high school, and this is my senior presentation, which covers a little bit about me, my career portfolio, my resume, my future college plans, and things I've done at the high school. So, it starts out with my resume and my objective, which is basically to find a career and a path for me to, that combines both my passion for journalism, as long as, along with my passion for biology and chemistry. It includes my work experience at Frederick Living as a utility aide, where I wash dishes, sweep the floors, and keep their cafeteria clean. My skills in analytical thinking and time management, and my hobbies of photography and communications. So, a little about me before we get into that. I am the editor-in-chief of the BASH Cub with my co-editor Ethan Millard. The picture on the left is, I love to travel, and the picture on the left is me at the Vatican over in Rome. The picture in the middle is me and my advisor for the Cub, Mrs. Schar Schmidt, in Washington DC at the Washington Journalism and Media Conference, hosted by George Mason University. This was a very great opportunity. I was able to get through her. I was nominated by her and able to attend, thanks to her and the Cub. And the picture on the right is me and my twin brother Frank at the beaches of Normandy on the Europe trip that the school hosted last year. So, I love to travel. I enjoy telling a story, and it's a little about me. Ninth grade for career portfolio, I went to a, I did a college visit at Penn State Berks, and I wrote my essay about how I liked the campus. I loved the location. It's only 45 minutes down the road. I liked that it was a small school with only 44,000 students. I liked the majors. They have my studies of interest, biology and chemistry. So, it was a very good experience for me, and it got, showed me, it was like a stepping stone into what higher education looks like and how that goes. And then 10th grade, I did my Smart Futures activities. The one that impacted me the most was my job interview. We, I learned about how that process works, and I used what I learned for that to get my job at Frederick Living and pass my job interview. 11th grade, I did EverFi, where we covered all the topics on screen. The ones most impactful for me were budgeting and checking in savings accounts. For my job at Frederick Living, I had to open a checking account to receive my direct deposit. I did that over at Surest Bank. It was really good for me. And then the budgeting skills I did, I was able to save up my money and buy a drone to foster my like for photography, and I was able to take that picture of the bridge there on the slide. So, that was a really good opportunity for me, and I'm grateful for everything I learned that was able to help me be able to do that and reach my fullest potential. 11th grade, I also did my job shadow. I did that over at Merck with a woman named Mary Buamatt. She works in the Regulatory Affairs Department. I had to do, I did a lot of research looking into a career that combined journalism and communications and landed on Regulatory Affairs. Mary's job is to oversee changes in the manufacturing process of vaccines at Merck, and she writes those changes up to the FDA for approval, and she works with a team of people to complete that. It's not an entry-level job. Everyone in Regulatory Affairs had to work in manufacturing to be able to know the process that they're changing. So, it's, you work in manufacturing for like five years right out of college, and then you can work your way up into this department. It's a potential career for me that I would use my degree in biology or chemistry for. Post-secondary goals, I intend to plan a, I intend to go to a four-year college and get a degree in biochemistry or chemistry. After that, I plan to either attend graduate school to go into healthcare, or go right into a work force in the pharmaceutical industry, something like Merck. I have toured Lockhaven, Millersville, Penn State, Thomas Jefferson, De Sales, and St. Joe's. The pictures on screen are of St. Joe's, the sign on the left, and on the right is their Science Center, where I toured and got to see their biology labs. So, my career path I picked because it's a midpoint of my two best interests and skills, and I want to make a positive impact on the world. The top three pictures on the, on the, this slide are me at the Washington Journalism and Media Conference with Mrs. Schar Schmidt in Washington DC. It was a really good experiment, experience, and it showed me what the career of communications and journalism was like. The bottom three pictures are at my Advanced Medicine and Healthcare thing, hosted by Johns Hopkins University. I got to do mock surgery and mock trauma, which are pictured there, and we got to tour the University of Maryland Medical School, where I got to see Edgar Allan Poe's grave. So, all these great things and opportunities I got from BASH and all the people there. And I would like to thank Mrs. Schar Schmidt, my advisor, because I would not be standing before you today without her. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for John before I introduce Ethan?
Likely not going to top that, but I can sure try. Hello, my name's Ethan Millard. I'm a, currently a senior at BASH, but I came from Boyertown Elementary School. Then I went to Boyertown Middle School West, which means I've moved about half a mile in my time, 13 years or so, which is better speed than I normally do. So, I spent a lot of my time in high school, working in the journalism classroom. I took it my freshman year, and I've taken it all the way up to my senior year. To, and this year, I've actually joined the Cub as well, and I've written 29 articles or so over my time here. And it was one of the main ways that I got to see myself improve over the years. Definitely my writing for sure, but I also liked getting to speak with other people. I am a co-editor with John Luce, and I get to talk with the many other journalism students as well, with helping edit articles, or even emailing teachers for interviews is something that I have gotten way, way better at over my time. And so, just moving on to some of the stuff I did, did a couple activities. These are, I think, the ones I want to focus on most. The personality type described me as being very strong-willed and responsible, but also sometimes stubborn and always by the book. You ever read something and just not agree with the majority of it? I, I do believe that I can be these, I can be these descriptors, but it can also sometimes be very hard to stay very strong-willed. I definitely am always by the book, though. I'll say that much. I, when I got to the personal interest section, something that interested me was, for someone who would say, "I'm not actually a big fan of public speaking", I, it told me that I was better at, like, performing, leading, persuading other people to view things my way, or even listening to others and trying to view things their way, and I found that very interesting, which it was able to give me some time to actually learn a bit more about myself, but also learn about how I think I want to approach different topics. And the final one might be a bit confusing. It's a little bit weirdly cropped. Active listening. I scored pretty high on it. I, active listening is a super important skill for a journalist. You do interviews all the time. It's important that you can note all of it. I unfortunately lost points on the section where I had to recount everything, but thank goodness I have notebooks. I actually have, I have my reporter's notebook right on me, and I usually keep that on me as much as I possibly can, because the second I leave the room, it goes right out of my head, so. So, EverFi, that's my certificate proving that yes, I did actually complete it. I, as the man on the board shows, I'm not great with finances, and I wasn't before. I've had very nice parents who have helped me along my journey, but EverFi was a great opportunity to learn about many of the different aspects in the entire process, getting, applying for jobs, what to do with the money for when I do apply for a job, how to sign up for credit cards, how to purchase insurance. All very boring stuff, but all something that I feel was very critical for me to eventually learn. So, I got to visit Penn State Berks for my college visit. It was a great opportunity. It was the first time I was able to visit a college. I was able to learn a lot about what college life is like. I remember a lot about it, basically seeing just the sheer scale of the campus. I learned what a cadaver was that day from the presenter. And I also was really interested seeing just what life may be like for the future. I was also able to write my essay on it. I'm not ashamed to admit that I do believe it was not a great essay. I definitely should have put more thought and more time into how much the visit actually impacted me. And looking back, while I do think it was one of the defining parts of applying for colleges, I do think that I did not elaborate it on as much. And the picture in the bottom just explains a bit more about what I want to do in the future. I plan to study paleontology as a major and hopefully become a paleontologist. You know, not great with people, but I'm great with really, really old people. Moving on, this is my resume. Maybe a bit hard to read, so if you actually look under your seats, you'll notice there's nothing there, because I didn't pass them out. But two things I would like to note, I wrote that I am a journalism student, who should hopefully have a high school diploma by the end of this year. But I was also a delegate for the Washington Youth Summit on the Environment. The Washington Youth Summit on the Environment, I think John mentioned a bit, the Washington Journalism and Media Conference that he went to. This is the sister program of that. It's more environmentally focused, but covers a lot of the same stuff. I got to visit the Press Club. I got to talk with many people, one person even from the EPA, which was a great experience. You stayed on George Mason, the campus, for about a week. You stayed in a dorm room. You'd get up pretty early, and then you would get in dressed like this, and you would go with your groups, and you'd do very college-like things. You would go to classes. You would hear from presenters. You would learn, take notes. You would, basically, it was like living at the college for a week. And similar to the experience that I had in Penn State Berks, it was really nice getting to learn what that life might be like. And I also got to meet a ton of different people who I still keep contact with. I got to learn more about how to network with different people. I got to learn how to communicate with people who share diff, like, share ideas, but were both not exactly sure how to express them. And I got to visit tons of different places on it, which was an incredibly joyful experience. This is my job shadow I did. I was able to job shadow with a volunteer for the Boyertown Historical Society. She was able to teach me about, like, I, getting, sorry, I should start, getting to the job shadow. I got to learn about different scheduling and communication that goes on. Took a few tries. I walked in the wrong door, so. But I also got to learn about what they do there, cataloging artifacts and basically uploading them to a digital area where they keep all of them uploaded, which was really cool, but it was, it's similar to what I would do as a paleontologist. A lot of it is cataloging and stuff like that. And it was not the most exciting thing, but it was something that I still enjoyed. I liked history. I still like history, I should say. And I really enjoyed getting to learn what it might be like. So, looking forward, that's me. I'm going to be the next Supreme Court Justice. Look out for that. No, that is me in front of the Supreme Court, but that's not exactly where I planned ahead. I believe that of the many different experiences I've had here at BASH, I am a product of all of those, and that I may be able to continue to improve myself from looking back at my experiences, but also continue to learn new experiences, new classes, new abilities and skills that I can use in the future. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions for both of you, actually.
Oh, okay. You want to stand up?
So, are you all ready to apply to schools, early actions by November 1st, correct?
Yes.
Have anyone heard back yet? No? What is your wish list?
Would you like to go first, or?
Sure. My, my top school is St. Joseph's down in Philadelphia, but my other ones are De Sales, Thomas Jefferson, and Millersville.
Much shorter list in total, but I'd love to be able to go to Penn State. It was great visiting it, but Delaware. Delaware University is another very good choice, especially for paleontology, and George Mason, which I've already mentioned that I got to visit, has programs in it and is a more science-based school that I'd love to be able to go to.
Well, I wish you both well. You're very articulate, intelligent, and I think you're going to do well.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm going to jump in for just a second before we transition. They were having a conversation out in the lobby tonight as we were waiting to get started, and it was really cool. They were actually talking to Allison, the other Allison in the room, and talking to her and encouraging her to write for the Cub. And basically, if she wrote an article as a non-member of the Cub, she would be a contributor and could put that on her resume. But if she decided to join the Cub, she would be a correspondent, which was really neat, just the discussion about resumes, listening to kids in high school talk about resumes. And I want to offer the two of you the same opportunity. You are more than welcome to join me to help to each do an article for the district-level newspaper or newsletters. So, I just want to extend that to both of you. Tonight has been really great, and I had the pleasure of seeing five additional seniors, and we're all going to have the pleasure of seeing more throughout the coming year. So, if there's anything I can do to help you with college admissions, anything with communications, and again, I extend you the offer to become a contributor to Let's Talk Tuesday, or it bears repeating. So, all right, I'm going to turn it back over to you guys, because you're crushing it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do the intro?
I can do the intro.
All right.
So, this is the, this is the BASH Cub. We are Boyertown High School's school newspaper. I'm editor-in-chief with my co-editor Ethan. We have two other correspondents in attendance tonight.
Hi, I'm Logan Dice. I'm a correspondent. I've been one for two years. This is my second year, and I'm a sophomore at BASH.
We also have Evelyn, who is one of our first-year correspondents tonight in the audience. Wave hi, everyone.
She likes to write, not present.
So, this is a little bit about me. A lot of this was covered in my senior presentation from before, but the big gist of this is why I joined Cub, because I wanted to get more involved around my school. So, throughout my time in Cub, I've covered sports, events, plays, new teachers, new students, school trips, holidays, features, and a lot more. All of this would not have happened had I not been in Cub, so I'm very grateful for that opportunity.
Again, similar to what John said, this is very similar to a lot of what I explained in my senior presentation. The main point of this one is actually bragging about myself. I've written 29 articles. I think I mentioned that, just making sure I mentioned it, though. And I think I've mainly, the reason I wrote this slide is I've become way better as a writer. I wrote all three of those articles near the end of last year and at the start of this year, and I've been able to cover a wide variety of school-related topics. And it's been very nice getting to see the different improvements that I've made in my writing.
So, our Cub mission statement is, which is, which is to be a voice for students in the school to voice their opinions. We are a public forum where you can, where students can contribute and foster their communication, writing, and writing skills. We want to supply the community with true unbiased information that is factually based with evidence. So, we do a lot of writing and fact-checking, and we cite our sources. We give photo credits, but that's basically our mission.
All right, so here's just a few things we've done. Ms. Moyer talked a little bit about Let's Talk Tuesdays. We've had a few articles, including one of mine actually, be featured on Let's Talk Tuesdays, because we write about school current events. So, it can be helpful to showcase what we've done. We have earned 14 Best of SNO. SNO is the website that we run the BASH Cub through, and it is a pretty prestigious award that they go over every school in the country and pick any, like, we submit articles, and then they pick which ones they think are really good. And since Ms. Schar Schmidt has joined, we've received 14. Ms. Schar Schmidt is the main advisor for the Cub, and she is basically the person behind everything. She's also the head editor, so whenever an article has to get published, it goes through her. Some other things, two of our writers before have placed in the Student Keystone Press Awards back in 2020. We've had students get different internships with more journalism places, including some you may know, like the Pots Down Mercury, but they're in a ton of different things, sports broadcasting, or sports writing, or normal writing, and tons of different news areas that people still keep in touch with us. We've had, at the bottom there, we've had three different people nominated for the Washington Summits. John and I are one, and then last year's co-editor, Emma Webster, was nominated, and those, all three of us chose to attend. It was a great opportunity, and I definitely could not pass it up.
So, we would like to thank Frederick Living for sponsoring our platform as we come here tonight to ask for them to be able to continue to sponsor our platform and our voices. Their continued support is vital for us to run successfully as they keep our website up and running. And we would like to thank the school board for considering approval for us to continue to have Frederick Living partner with us.
Any questions?
Is the BASH Cub, is that in digital form, in printed form, or just between the students and the staff? Is, how, how do you?
That's actually a good question. So, the BASH Cub is strictly digital as of now. In former years, it's been running since, for, I think, around since the school actually started. And we have, we actually have some of the, 1921, we actually have some of the physical papers. But as of now, it's strictly digital, just on the BASH Cub website, where you can see it.
One of the things you'll see on the superintendent's consent agenda later on is the donation to allow this opportunity to continue. So, we thought it was a great opportunity for our students to really speak and create some relevance as to why it's, it's a great resource and very appreciative of the donation.
Very appreciative to continue working with the Cub and continue writing for it. It's given so many different students the opportunity to write for the Cub and be able to learn more about our school district and the different events and history of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, great job, guys. This is the point where I used to walk folks out, but I have a new role, and I'm in charge of the computer over here. So, I'm going to say goodnight, let you guys walk out, but thanks again for being here. You did a beautiful job tonight, so congratulations.
Thank you so much for having us.
This time, I'd like to welcome Liliana and Allison back for our student representative report. So, ladies.
Good evening, board members and meeting attendees. It feels like the month flew by, but a lot of exciting events have taken place since our last report. This month is full of school spirit and anticipated career portfolios here at BASH.
As you may know, the Pinkout game occurred on Friday, October 11th, and although we didn't win, it was a great showing of school spirit and awareness for the unfortunate but common occurrence of breast cancer in our community and beyond. While I couldn't make it to the game, I was able to make it to the dance, where the student body described the experience to be a blast and a fun break from the school year. There was a large turnout, and it would be likely considered none other but a great success. We'd like to take a moment to thank both the student council and volunteers for making the dance possible.
Last Wednesday, the 16th, as Mrs. Moyer already mentioned, was a nerve-wracking but important day for many students. In the morning, the freshmen participated in BCTC information sessions and worked on their career portfolio assignments. Sophomores took the practice ACT, while juniors took the practice SAT. Although these tests are not everyone's favorite, receiving the scores is extremely helpful when creating plans for the future and choosing what test to focus on during college preparation. Finally, seniors presented their senior portfolio presentations, which you were able to see. One senior described the process of creating the presentation as slightly challenging but ultimately beneficial to see how far you've come since freshman year. We are all grateful to have finished another task on the journey to graduation.
This week, from the 21st to the 25th is Red Ribbon Week, a week categorized by Drug Prevention and Awareness for Students Around the School District every October. This week establishes the district's commitment to leading students to a drug- and alcohol-free lifestyle, choosing healthy choices that will ultimately benefit their futures. The Red Ribbon Program, as we know, is a ubiquitous campaign originating from the DEA of the United States and displays a commitment to the future of our youth.
Our elementary school highlight this month is Boyertown Elementary School. A couple of weeks ago, the Boyertown PTO welcomed all of the students and families back with a back-to-school luau. It was a huge success, and according to Mr. Cale, the opportunity for students and their families to meet and connect was a great way to start the year. Next week, Boyertown is hosting their annual Fall Fest on Friday evening. We hope all the students and staff at Boyertown have an excellent school year.
The BASH musical, as we know, is Once Upon a Mattress, a comedic but heartfelt musical that will be a great addition to the district's spring productions for 2025. Auditions will be held on November 4th and November 5th with callbacks on the 7th. Students can drop outside of Mr. Brunner's room to pick up audition packets, and all students are welcomed and encouraged to audition. While it is a great commitment, it is also an amazing opportunity for students to hone their skills and create a great production.
Before we do wrap up, we didn't include this, but we had
Before we do wrap up, we didn't include this, but we had a bunch of sports things happen. We had some golf pack championship qualifiers. We had BASH Girls Field Hockey One packs and we also had some cross-country packs as well. So we'd like to give a congratulations to those students. We look forward to highlighting the accomplishments and dedication of our students, staff, and schools in next month's update. Thank you all for listening. Have a great rest of your evening.
There's no one signed up for a public comment period number one, so at this time, we'll be looking for the approval of the October 8th, 2024 committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented.
The board moves.
I'll second.
Ms. Duroff?
No.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
We haven't had to request a discussion, so my answer is no.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Treasurer report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll be presenting to you a few highlights from the September 2024 treasurer's report. Local revenue, delinquent tax collection was approximately $113,513.75. Earned income tax collection was approximately $914,333.37. Transfer tax collection was approximately about $213,138.19. And for state revenue, we received PDE social security subsidy that was approximately $1,437,662.10. PDE special education subsidy was approximately $768,815. And our pre-K count subsidy was approximately $45,000. And the PDE retirement subsidy was approximately $3,303,490.27. For expenditures, the category of salaries, benefits, and professional services accounted for about 75% of the monthly expenditures for September. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
At this time, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Zawada seconds.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This time, I'd like to present the superintendent's consent agenda. We have three items on there, a settlement agreement, the Garden Spot Communities Donation, which was the reference to our Cub newspaper, as well as a CrossFit Grant Award. I'd like to look for the approval of the consent agenda.
Panerello, seconds.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would like to present the superintendent's itemized agenda. We have one item on the itemized agenda and that is looking for the approval of the personnel list. And I would look for a motion to approve.
Panerello moves.
I'll second.
Comments and questions?
Ms. Duroff?
I've been asking for it for two years. I've got an increase in salary for our generators. And tonight, when I see you paying $10 for students and offer $14 for a grown person that feeds his family, it's appalling. I have been asking and asking. I don't know what to do to get that raise. I think this is the most embarrassing thing in this community and I will go through. And we're also losing more good people, so I'd like to know what the reason for that is. We're using a good IT person, very good person, and we're losing her. Something is going on and we're losing all these people. Thank you.
Ms. Ron, do you have any insight into why we're losing the IT person?
I know that Ms. Ktagness is taking a position closer to home with less responsibility.
I, I do agree with that, with the custodial crew, because you need them. You need them and we can't keep, it's hard to find help at all today. We, we really need, there's no reason why we can't give them a raise. We, we have the money to do that and I think we should.
I'm gonna have to agree with that because if somebody can go to Walmart and get $15 an hour and we can't do that, shame on this board, shame on this administration. I mean, I don't think $16 an hour for them would be too high. I think it's still on the low side. If we want to keep our good people, we better start showing them we approve and appreciate them.
Mr. Han, just out of curiosity, what's the norm?
We'll have the Forecast Five data from the BCIU at the end of next month. I did look at some, some other neighboring districts and we're, we're a little on the low end. I would say, you know, 15, 50 to $16 is probably the starting rate. And then there's shift differential for either second or third shift.
And how would that be brought forward to us?
Well, we'd have to do a cost analysis in regards to how many full-time, part-time custodial staff we have. We'd have to look at what a $1.50 or $2.00 increase would look like with all-in, including the Peasers, the Flake on top of that. But obviously, Mrs. Denneke and I can, we can work on something for that if, if that is the direction of the board. Okay.
I think we, we do have to raise it, but I also think there'll be money well spent if these people are trained. Maybe our equipment might all be broken down and we have to replace weird stuff because nobody's being taught how to use our equipment and we bought some expensive stuff. We, we gotta analyze that whole department. It's a mess.
I think when we're analyzing too, we have to remember, we're not competing with other schools on this. Like Mrs. Nyman said, we're competing with local businesses and they're paying more. And these are our community people. Most of these people live in our community and they need, we need to, we need to bless them. This isn't enough to live on.
What kind of shift differential are you looking at?
We have shift differential now, 40 cents.
That's, I, I can tell you from working previously across the street here, they found that that's one of the good reasons why they can't keep second and third shift people. I mean, I think they upped it to a dollar an hour over there, if I remember correctly. I mean, these are people who have ties to this community. They love this community and we're just smacking them in the face. We need to do something, we need to step up.
Can I just offer that we analyze this, present information to the board as part of the budget building process for 2025, '26, that will be entering, you know, very shortly, to ensure that we, you know, we're capturing everything that would entail for these increases, along with other increases that the district would be facing. I think we can, you know, come up with a, an amenable solution that can, you know, kind of raise that custodial rate as we've done with the food service rate and come back with, you know, a little more information for the board.
Okay.
I hope you don't plan on waiting till July to give these people a raise. I think it's something that we need to look at now.
That would, we'll present the information to the board and that would be a definite board decision.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff? Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comment period number two, Ms. Savage?
Good evening, everyone. To say that your board agendas have been sparse is definitely an understatement. You were elected to lead the district by evaluating and planning for the future. And now's the time to start discussing those cost drivers anticipated for next year's budget. So you're prepared in January to start making the state-mandated decisions regarding the budget. And you only have two meetings left in 2024. Here are some topics you should be discussing every year and have a pulse on at all times. What does your five-year financial outlook look like? What cost driver trends do we expect? For example, special, special education, cyber charter school tuition, healthcare benefits, infrastructure, Peasers, personnel, and new updated state mandates, curriculum, and any other staffing needs. So another question is, is our unassigned fund balance, that's our district savings account, healthy? Based on actuals from 2020, 2022, '23, and the planned that you have outlined for '23, '24, you have taken 30% of our savings account in just two years, despite historic funding increases from the state. So I hope you tell me there's a plan or you tell me that I'm wrong there. How well are students achieving? It appears from anecdotal dating, data that our students are not bouncing back after COVID as well as some districts around us are. So now, so thank you for listening to all that and I hope to see more robust discussion among this board. But I do have a question. What did our district budget for cyber charter school expenses? And what did we budget for the revenue for it from the state for the 2024, 2025 school year? So will somebody be able to get back to me on that?
We can, we will get the information for you.
Thank you very much.
Can you give me that in writing, email it to me? Thanks.
Board comment period. Ms. Updegrove?
Yes. I want to congratulate the kids, 120 of them, that went to the BCTC a couple of weeks ago for the, just to look the place over and to see what they're, you know, thinking about getting into. I also want to say congratulations to our varsity field hockey team who won the pack championship. They will be playing the Shammany on Wednesday in the second round of the District One playoffs at Pots Grove. I think that game's at four o'clock. And also, congratulations to Aiden Vaunt, who is the pack boys' cross-country champion. Aiden and other members of the boys' and girls' teams will be competing in the District One championship race on Friday at Lehigh University. And also, congratulations to Chase Dillman, who qualified and competed in the PIAA Golf State Championship at Penn State on Monday and Tuesday. Best of luck to our boys' soccer and the girls' volleyball teams, who are playing in the first round of District One playoffs tonight. If I didn't have to be here, I would have been there.
I want to thank that Cub presentation and it sounds like they have a fantastic teacher there supporting them, which means a lot. So thank her very much for all that she's doing with them. Another topic on my radar is our access cards. As a board member who is elected to this position, I am looking to have access to our buildings between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, so that if I get a complaint, I can go in, I let the principal know I'm there, and I can go check it out. There should be no issue with that. I'm tired of hearing about things that are going on in buildings. I'm tired of hearing it's raining in, in this building or it's raining in, in that building. Because by the time I get to somebody here and say something, it's cleaned up. So I want to have the access to that as the oversight, which I gave Mr. Shaltanik a court case and that has precedence. And if need be, I can push that further if I have to.
So, Mr. Updegrove?
Are you looking for me to respond?
Oh, sorry.
I'm not going to respond to that.
Okay. All right, sorry, Mr. Updegrove stole my thunder as I wanted to congratulate our athletes as well for all of their success this week. I was able to go to the cross-country packs and it was quite an exciting finish to watch Aiden sprint to the finish and win the pack. That's a huge deal. Takes a lot of effort and hard work. Also, thank you to our board reps for your informative report. And also, thank you to the Cub students who presented. It was nice to have students be the focus of a meeting. And I was able to participate in the senior portfolios and they're always great. I enjoy that, I enjoy that time with the kids. I enjoy seeing what they're up to and how they're thinking and what they're doing because my kids are out of the house now and I'm, I've lost touch a little bit with the teenagers. And so it's always nice to be part of that. Also, congratulations to field hockey. That's one of my favorite sports. My daughter played that and I'm sorry that they're not here playing on our turf fields, but I wondered how that was going because we haven't been hearing anything and I'd like to know what's going on there.
Mr. Shields here, we could, we could speak to some of the, the specifics, but from my understanding, there are assessments that are happening with the turf, not the new turf, but the actual grass itself and the assessments that are going along with that. That is taking some time that they can't just make a quick analysis and we have to wait for feedback on some of those steps to move forward with what would move forward with putting out a request for bid. So, Mr. Shields, is there anything?
We're just currently working on the MPDES permit, which is the surveying drain water and, and that, you know, that area of the turf field, not so much the carpet, but what's underneath it. So that's where we currently are. We had the surveyors out there. We just found the drainage pipe on the field that goes out to a detention basin, so that's where we're at.
Are we, is it just one bid or are we working on two or what, what are we?
Right now, it's just a site plan.
Oh, it's not out for bid?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's just a site plan.
Okay. All right, sorry.
Yeah, this analysis is taking place to be able to put it out for bid. So we, we were looking at the potential of January to have kind of what the next steps would be when we would have a, a next presentation because we're hoping to have all the results back by then.
I didn't have anything to say really, but now that we're talking about turf, I just wondered if we figured out how we're going to pay for turf and all the expenses at Boyertown now. We're talking 12 to 15 million there. I want to know how that's going to play out.
We don't know what the ultimate cost is going to be for the turf to come back, so we're waiting for the analysis of all those pieces and we'll have to make a decision when that time comes to look at what the whole, both projects would cost.
Because we probably won't have the exact numbers for the, for Boyertown now at that same time. That's what's scary to me.
I, I don't disagree to have both numbers come back. That's going to be important to be in consideration for those decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
Real quick, Leyland and Allison, again, great job. Thanks for coming back. Appreciate it. I think you need the guys to be here and you do a great job. Also, our sports are very, makes us proud. The school district's always been a great sports school district and we proved it again. One can say that I made a lot of noise the last three years about Life Class. And I learned this last week with Senior Project, that Everfire's been in there and every one of those students that I saw, I was blown away, just flat out. I contacted- I contacted the people that I felt needed to apologize and say great job to. Two years ago, when I first did this, I honestly only passed two out of six, and the hardest part this time was trying to find something wrong. And I couldn't find anything wrong with my, my students and/or the people that did the job. And if they accomplish 80% of what they showed us, they'll be amazing people for our community as well as for our country. So I can't say enough about what's been pushed in there. We fought like heck to find a Health, a Life Class and didn't realize we already had one that was working. It didn't work back then, but it's definitely working now. So thank you to the teachers, the administration, and again, great job.
I have nothing further to add.
Upcoming meeting dates, we have the next Committee of the Whole Meeting, which is going to be at Gilbertsville Elementary School on November 12th at 7:00 p.m. And then we are back here at the Ed Center on Tuesday, November 26th at 7:00 p.m. for our Board of School Directors meeting.
Real quick, Mrs. Landis, we discussed this in leadership, but with the school being closed for Election Day, I thought maybe possible if we could talk to some of our social study teachers and see if any students would like to come out and be at the polls and learn. I mean, some of us, I have a poll watcher certificate, so I'm maybe able to go inside, and I think it might be a good learning experience for some of the kids to see how things run on the day of election. So if you want to put word out, possibly, you know, I know Mr. Upper Grove's going to be working, Ms. Nyman, Ms. Scott, and myself, and I know there's six people or seven people that are working under me. So it would be great if, and if they need transportation help or whatever, we all have our cars, so, you know, if we can get some of the kids out, that would be great.
Ms. Moore moves.
I'll second.
Ms. Moore.